A pleasant region to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, unratified, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Approval of the minutes. Do we have any revisions, corrections? Or can you entertain a motion to approve that? Sorry. Motion in a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those same sign. Motion is carried. Approval of the final bills for 2021.
There should be an additional list on your desk.
Some on that list will require a motion. Andy, is this, is this a subheading or is this all over here?
Um.
Are these two separate amounts? This plus 138 or is it? Is this a sub? I knew this one.
Oh, yeah.
Yep.
That's a general point in every other fund, right?
Yeah.
I'll make a motion for a build this minute.
Okay, there's a motion to do in a second.
Second.
Thanks. Roll call.
Volk.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Chris.
Aye.
Lightfon.
Aye.
Wakefield.
Aye. We want to approval of the agenda. Do we have any revisions, corrections to make to the agenda?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to add, uh, discussion on the Highway Two expansion, public comment. Uh, did you get any discussion?
Under the business?
Under new business, please.
Okay. We have a second for that? Anything else?
Yeah, I'd like to add, uh, the independent contract agreement.
Discussion on that?
Yes.
Okay, uh, are you willing to amend your motion agenda to get that? Okay, we have a motion in a second. Uh, any further discussion? All those in favor of approving the agenda signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, it's already on there?
Yep.
Never mind.
Yep, we've got it covered.
What, one more gun?
Yeah.
Okay, just to curl at 6:45, so we gotta get rolling.
Oh, boy. Oh, boy. Well, in that case, John, you've got about 40 seconds.
Just a couple of things with the training center. Uh, the problem is that I've already talked to Otter Tail, they're gonna take that substation to the park for that building, and they're going to get rid of it. So I put ourselves on the name for that land just park and training center, so I don't need a fence, who would use a fence to? This can go for about five years from now, so, uh, just a little expansion. I would like, uh, your guys' permission to look into getting some grants and to, uh, look at, uh, Bank of North Dakota, USDA, everyone that does zero percent financing for a project like this. Uh, try to get, uh, first responders on their days off to volunteer, come together, it's taking a long time for us to build, so like to at least get some pricing, some options for you guys to look into it, just, uh, getting that project done. Otherwise, it's gonna take forever, and it's not doing us any good to stay in there. Got it, no. So I just like to look at some of the stuff and see what we can bring to you guys on that.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Uh, as far as ambulance service, uh, some good news, there are little mini ambulants. I was able to raise $11,000 in private funds for that. Uh, I'll chew, um, I hate to say this, but, uh, kind of pepping myself out. And I'll chew healthcare services, as long as they are the only healthcare provider. List on many ambulants on the side, letters next door, so thanks to Racton County and its citizens. If they book, or if we put their name up there, it'll match up to 35,000. So, um, we had discussed before about raising financing for that, so something I'd like to pursue with the possibility, uh, getting a final price and see if the county would give one as ever. But also we'll do up to 35,000 plus 11,000 of that $75,000 project.
Oh, good job. You raised a lot of that already?
Yep. So, uh, disabled vets vehicle, and going on the opposite side, I know Safford wants to build here too, so I'm like, yes, I'd be willing to put in some money for it. Disabled vet van on the other side, I don't mind getting a billboard that saves people money and it's needed for the. But that's all I have for updates, and just real quick, just one extra, who will approve it before I start moving projects?
Absolutely. However we can help, I think we're all in favor of helping you guys do the services that you need to do for the community. We appreciate it.
Wonderful. Uh, have a happy holidays. You guys have any questions?
Well, same to you.
Yeah. Have a happy holidays. Thanks, Sean. Sean, to me, almost 40 seconds. It's done, I'm wrong really well.
I tend to get a little bit of a long way there.
That's all right. We're all that against you.
Uh, so, uh, Star and I have been working out for the different commissions to approach everybody regarding the period dispatch system that we uh, would like to get for the 911 center. Um, we started probably close to two months ago now, uh, going around to all the counties to talk to all the emergency managers and the responder agencies, uh, to garner support and to get some feedback as far as how we're potentially paid for the CAD system. Um, and essentially, I think what we came up with is that we ultimately want to, uh, change or deviate from how we've handled some of the projects under the law enforcement center already. Uh, so we basically developed the cost share formula on how to approach it. Um, and I think that that's kind of what, uh, what everyone, uh, was in favor of. Uh, so we do have some information in front of you, some numbers that we do have, that we put together. Uh, we were basically like we do with the cost share for law enforcement center, where they can call for service that we get for all the agencies, uh, within our region. Uh, putting them into, uh, dividing them into counties, and then the county that they're within, and then breaking that much, that number out amongst the counties. Uh, one of the things for me, as we go through this process, is every county is different. And like, we look at any county who has four agencies, where you get Nelson County where they have 12 to 14 different agencies. So each county's gonna handle things a little bit differently. And any county too, 90% of, uh, of their calls is gonna be just for the sheriff's office. Uh, so the remaining 10% of their portion, you know, does the county want to actually go up to their, uh, volunteer services to get that money, or are they just? And that's what I expect that any county's gonna do, is to just cover the full share for them. Uh, Racton County is very different with the makeup that you guys have within Racton County, specific to the city agencies, and they make urgent ambulance and call volume that we have from those agencies. Uh, and I've had conversations with Sean, and I know that they're comfortable with their portion. Uh, but I don't want to also have to be the one that's trying to go up to the different agencies to bill and figure that stuff out either. So, um, with the CAD, uh, we've been working on this for probably a year, a little bit better than a year with Motorola, and we've also looked at Central Square, so we've done all three different options. Uh, Motorola's Spillman Flex is the one that we have left to move forward with. Uh, we do have a quote that is good through the end of this year. We have requested, uh, a new quote from them. Uh, and in the discussions we have had, that they, if we are able to show that we're looking to still move forward, that they would honor, we're asking them to extend their existing quote into next year, and if they would honor it. Uh, right now, the quote for the new CAD system is $180,000. Uh, that will include all of the hardware at the law enforcement center for the dispatch center. Uh, it also includes all software license accesses for all responders and responder agencies. Uh, what it does not cover is the hardware that maybe would be needed in rigs or in squad cars, uh, if they want to utilize the full benefits of a CAD system. Uh, I'm not gonna get too much into what a CAD can do. Uh, we currently don't have a fully functioning CAD within, in the dispatch center. Uh, and those who are familiar with how to work it from previously in other locations, uh, are pretty adamant about how beneficial it would be for us. Um, we're talking about making things a lot more efficient, not only for our dispatchers, but for the first responders. Uh, you know, we're talking about having GPS located, you know, tracking on the rigs and on the squad cars, so if they're, they're going to a call, our dispatchers will see if they're heading the wrong direction, or if they missed a turn, or if there's a pursuit going on, we'll be able to get other, coordinate with other units to get them from a pursuit.
Well, are those added costs on what you're just discussing? Cause that's kind of what it sounded to me, like you said, is that 180,000 is for the internal, like, in the building, and then it'd be additional costs for outfitting squad cars.
For extra, yeah, for the hardware that would be needed for the squad cars. Now, I think most of them are already using top books and stuff, so they probably already have the hardware that they would need. So there may not be additional expense for some of those departments. There are some though, that will probably don't have anything that would need to invest in some hardware, if they wanted to take full advantage of the CAD system. So, yeah, it does include all the licenses and accesses, uh, to the software, just doesn't include the peripheral hardware stuff or outside the dispatch center. Um, yeah, it's, uh, one of the things that we've gone through too, that we identified here recently. Uh, in another project, we're working on trying to get the guardian RFID system for the jail. Uh, and we ran into a hiccup where it doesn't integrate seamlessly with P1, which is our records management system. Use that within the jail, all the counties and law enforcement agencies in our whole county area also use it for their law enforcement records management system. So that were, uh, brought a concern to me as far as the integration of the CAD to our records management system. When we first talked to our original, uh, original representative from Motorola, he'd indicated there won't be any issues with it. Uh, being connect, you know, with them connecting it, there will be any additional costs to that. Uh, we did follow up and have another conversation with the state specific to the CAD earlier this month. Uh, and they were saying that there shouldn't be any issues. It sounds like Parks County already is using the Spillman Flex CAD and coordinating with the state P1 system. Uh, I am going to, we are still going to meet at Motorola on the 5th. We have a meeting with Phil from Motorola, and I want it right in. Um, so the, to make sure that we aren't gonna have any unexpected costs to get it to integrate. With the guardian system that I was looking at, I just got the number from Motorola today. It's gonna be an additional $40,000 to get Motorola to be able to integrate with the guardian system we're looking at, which is the guardian system is gonna run me 30,000, so I'm gonna add another 40 just to get it to connect with the record management system. So I don't know that that's gonna happen. So, but we've been able to work through some of those issues, and I'm not as concerned about it now as I was before. Really, the only other thing that I have before I open it up and give you guys an opportunity to ask some questions is, um, like I indicated, I'm going around with the different counties, uh, we have, I had requested, we had requested to be on the agenda for the city, it got punted, we're actually gonna be on the agenda now for January 3rd. Um, I think that the city would like to go back to, to have it to where they're separated up from the county. Uh, but again, I don't know, you know, whether, how everyone wants to do this, and, and we're just trying to, this is the best idea that we could come up with, or open other suggestions and ideas of how to cover the expenses.
180 is the bill for the city and county?
180 is total project. So the, the county, uh, Ramsey Counties is about one block of that, that would be Ramsey Counties. And that includes the city. And then we did break it down so that you could see within, within the county, however, breakdown by agency based upon the call usage. Uh, so like this, uh, PD is 6,300, Ramsey County Sheriff's Office is 2,100. Uh, Lake Region Ambulance, oh, hang on, I'm looking at the ambulance, I apologize for that. Uh, so, yeah, but those like police department is 71,566, Ramsey County Sheriff's Office is, uh, just short of 24,000. Lake Region Ambulance is more, just over 14,000, per initial cost.
So we're, we're looking at using the past numbers, not the tracking for 2021?
So 2021 then would be what we would look at, going to, and, and that may be, this is just what I have for data now.
Okay.
Uh, because of, it's a 14-month rollout period for when we actually sign on before it'll actually be implemented, so we're looking at 2023.
So this is a ballpark figure that we're.
Right, right.
So it's, it's probably gonna be in that range for the whole county, it's just a matter of the split between the county and the city.
Right.
And then how will we decide we would like to do it essentially?
Right, yeah. Cause then, in 2023, I would drop off 18 and that 21.
The, how, how many years are we paying this over?
So the system is guaranteed for, it's a 10-year contract, uh, that we would have to enter into to utilize the system. Uh, and then they do, uh, indicate that there will be no end of life to it.
So that 180,000 is for the 10-year lifespan?
So it's 180,000 for the purchase of the software, then there's 16,000 having to leave there after.
Okay.
For the whole CAD system?
Right.
16,000, yeah.
So we'd be talking X amount upfront, and then the annual cost would be six, would be 10, 99.50 basically between, and then we would use that on a split then going forward, and use the three years to drop the back year off and then add.
Correct.
Okay. That makes sense to me then. The other question I would have is, you've talked to all the other counties at this point?
Yes.
What has their indication been? They're all fine with it?
Positive.
Are they going to cover their outside ambulance services and all that? They're not gonna ask them to build up separately, or?
I know any county and, and I know any county for sure is covering full expense. Uh, Nelson County, I would expect they're gonna do the same with Benson County. Uh, the one thing that we have in here that we haven't had a chance to go over yet is to get over to the Spirit Lake. Cause we broke, broke Spirit Lake out separately, and when we did go over Benson County to talk to responders, we had good representation there, and we had a really good discussion with them. But we'd have to go out and convince the, the tribal council, that that's worth investment for that.
That 16,000 dollar annual, is that a lock-in for the 10 years then, or how is that?
That's, yeah, it will be locked in, and that's the number that we were provided with the quote.
But I assume we're also locked into it for 10 years, so like, if for whatever reason that system was not working out for us, we had to switch, I assume you had to buy out the contract for the remaining years of value, right?
Right.
Can I add something? He, he talked about law enforcement, but, uh, we're very much for this project, we're ambulance satire because it works on our system too. So not only is it worth the P system, but.
Do, so do you have the hardware in your ambulances to connect to this?
The hardware that the ambulance is firing, D is not as much as the, this department, and it's, uh, iPads, not really, but I bought top books in.
So, so the answer, yeah, you can, this, this would be immediately something that would provide you.
Yes. Like for, for walls and a lot of your service, we're already set.
Uh, I guess, I'm sure you probably said it, but it was really all the numbers on the page, but what, what's the, the benefit of the computer dispatch over the dispatch currently we have? I'm sure there's a lot of benefits, but just.
So if you come into our dispatch center, and how we go on the dispatch, and you look at our monitors that they have up, you'll see that, and I couldn't tell you how many different windows they have up on the monitors, with different programs that they need to access, that they give it time for.
There's a lot, I know that much.
Yeah, so when, like, when they have a traffic stop, and Star can probably give you a better example, having worked with the dispatch center, but uh, you know, they're having to run, put their information into, uh, what we're currently using for a CAD, which is just basically tracking who's available, who isn't available, uh, of, of the officers, and they're having to go and plug their name into, uh, NCIC to run the war tech. So they're having to go to different places to run all the things, and enter all that information redundantly, the CAD is gonna streamline that.
So this seamlessly streamlines it all, and then it makes it quicker response time and everything else?
Right. And then, like, even when dispatch has dispatches type any information as they're on the call, if the, they have a top book in their squad car, that information will come right across their screen as it's.
That's where the efficiency comes in.
Yeah.
Right, right, yeah. And then the individuals on on scene can enter their own information as well, and add it to those call sheets and.
And then that's shared with everyone.
Right.
I guess in my opinion, it sounds like an over there.
We do have a kind of a high, another high-end demo of the schedule for January 11th, so for anyone that is remote, so you can, it'll be on the computers, basically, there'll be a webinar on it. If you want to log in, you get a high, just a high overview of what it will do, not only for the dispatch center, but for the responding agencies, the, the volunteer agencies. Uh, that will have that from January 11th from 11 to 12 a.m. Uh, and so I'll make sure that I share the link with Candy, which is, if anyone wants to jump on. We'll probably be hosting a viewing at the law enforcement center in a courtroom, because I do believe that Motorola rep is gonna try and be on site for that. So at this point, my, my goal is, is to hopefully, uh, have, bring it back to the law enforcement center board in our January board meeting to potentially uh, get approval for us to move forward and, uh, start the process of getting the CAD.
Don't keep us appraised.
Okay.
Anything else?
Unless you have any other questions or anything to me.
Did you need a commitment from the county tonight to move forward?
I'm just bringing it back to the, to the board, cause then more likely if the board agrees and moves forward with it, then we'll probably do the same, like we did with Siren and develop contract, and then move into a valley.
Looking forward to it. Be a great addition.
All right.
No stars looking forward to it too.
Yes.
Thank you, Rob. All right.
Appreciate it.
Merry Christmas.
You too. Merry Christmas.
Kevin.
Okay, to start off, we have the, uh, the saw truck that, where we ordered it, still isn't here, but we did get the invoice for the snow equipment and labor to install that equipment. And I guess, I told him I agreed to pay for some of the labor left. Invoice to get on this year's budget is gonna be 54,391.
This is for labor on a cloud we don't do, is that right?
Just so I get on this year's budget. I get what you're saying.
Why, why? I didn't say anything. I just.
It's kind of like buying a combine in October, and it doesn't show up till the next March.
You want a motion for that separate?
Uh, yeah.
Okay, so. Second.
Motion in a second to approve payment of, uh, the labor invoice for our snowplow, that we hope to see it.
No, labor and the snow.
Oh, and the equipment.
Sorry. The, the 54, 391.
Right, correct.
75% of it.
That, that's 100% of the snow equipment and 70% of the labor.
Right.
That makes sense.
What Kevin said.
Excellent. Okay, uh, do we need a roll call for that, or is that just a simple?
We're banning it, correct?
Yeah, sure.
So I guess it's a roll call.
Yeah. Lightfon.
Aye.
Volk.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Chris.
Aye.
Wakefield.
Aye.
I guess my, to expand on that, my reasoning for some, 75% of the labor is, labor's kind of a guess anyway. It could have went long on their estimate, it could have went short on their estimate, that's right. I don't want to overpay them.
Yeah. Retain some and finish it next year.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, moving on. Uh, we got the invoice for the cutting edges from Butler. And that, that, the whole semi-load, they were 34,491 dollars and 60 cents. Motion to pay for those, so.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to pay for our semi-load of cutting edges. Uh, roll call again, please.
Brown.
Aye.
Chris.
Aye.
Lightfon.
Aye.
Volk.
Aye.
Wakefield.
Aye.
And the last thing I have, uh, Clem's Room got the new heater installed in our science shed slash water heater building, and that cost was 2,525 dollars even.
Motion to approve. Okay, we have a motion in a second, uh, to pay Clem's Room's 2,525 dollars for a heater. Uh, roll call one last time?
Volk.
Aye.
Chris.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Lightfon.
Aye.
Wakefield.
Aye.
I'm gonna call, do you have any? A couple of things, I guess, of things that I thought were worth this year, just beginning looking up. Probably have a, and then the hospital where they had more there on 24th, I'll get the, uh, PSME plans are in for paving project that will have a March opening, and then the bridge, the county has for the, state has it on May opening currently, but, um, when you get that pushed out, let's get the PSME plans in for that. Now, another thing, um, was I guess, it's not an email cabinet or two, but I think it's on our funds, get a community set up for that. Um, there's some legislation in the, um, House of Representatives, they're going through the Senate, it's, uh, State, Local, Travel, and Territorial Fiscal Recovery Infrastructure and Disaster Relief Flex, Flexibility Act. So it's, uh, Senate fills 3011 and House, um, built 5735. It's got 138 girl sponsors out of the 435 representatives, so about 32% for, it hasn't come to a vote yet, but looks like it would pass. Um, and then it also has provision in there to go out in the funds, uses none of their natural projects too, and allow them to be able to use for highways and bridges and that sort of thing. So if that passes, that'll change your options considerably for what you can do with the, our funds.
We'd love some clarification, so.
Yeah.
Anything that the federal government will give us, we'll appreciate it.
Yeah, I hope that passes. It's been sitting in, uh, Elson, South of 26, but. Well, people are still starting onto it though, there's still a lot of signs.
Well, I hope our speaker brings it to the floor then.
It's got a whole, they have passed some other things as well, supported.
Sure, but I've, I've, when I worked in Washington, that's something that happens, you know, you can have a bipartisan supported bill, and if they don't want it to come to a vote, they'll never have to come to a vote.
They can send it to committee and pull the costs, and try to get something else passed, and then use it as leverage. Hopefully they don't.
Yeah, hopefully they don't. I don't mean to sound doom and gloom about it, but that does happen, you know, things disappear into nooks and crannies, never to be seen again, no matter how popular they are.
So, all right, well, hopefully it passes. That's all I have.
So I have two.
Next guy.
Thank you.
Thank you both.
Merry Christmas to both of you.
Merry Christmas to you. Get to rest of that.
Thanks, guys.
Good night, Merry Christmas.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to new business, 2022 election precincts.
Hey, but they've been for a long time, right?
Glad to come here.
I'll make a motion to approve them.
Aye. Motion in a second to approve the 2022 precincts. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those same sign. Motion is carried. Go on to board appointments. Is this one you can?
Um, no, that's your.
This is for. You got nothing from the planning commission? You're not interested, you don't know if they're interested or not?
You sent out the same forms we always do, that say we'd like to be reappointed, and you haven't gotten anything back. Okay.
So I think with that one, we just, we'd like, need to just pick up the phone and.
Phone cable?
Yeah, either.
Touch, touch base instead of, you know.
Well, yeah, so that's.
Something that lost in the shop, well, I.
That, that, or maybe they're just not interested, and then we'll know we need to go out and advertise, but I hate to advertise if we don't have to. Well, I'll make, uh, we had just the two that were for the water board, correct? I'll make a motion to reappoint, uh, Brian Volk and John Brown to the water board. That's why I want them separately.
You, you want to make a motion to go on?
Yeah, just, just to appoint those two, and then we'll have a lead set of boards separately.
Do we, do we have a second on that? Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor of appointing Mr. Volk and Mr. Brown to the Ramsey County Water Resource District Board, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those same sign. Motion is carried. Would you like to? I give you a motion table.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to table the appointments to the Racton County Planning Commission.
Aye. We have a motion in a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those same sign, the motion carries.
But those appointments advertised at all in papers, or?
We, we do this letter first.
Yeah.
And then if we don't.
But it's not opened up to?
Unless we get a response back saying that they don't, well, to be on that position any longer.
Like a telephone call, or?
Let's just make sure that it's not falling through the cracks, and then the next, we'll know by the next meeting, sure, what, they're not very interested in that, if we need to advertise what?
Well, I'm, I'm thinking for, if, any board that has a board appointment open, I don't think that it should be automatically, and, you know, to the person that's there, it should be opened up to citizens at large if they're interested. That's all I'm indicating, um, in case there's other people that would be interested in, in serving, not that they're beating on any doors to.
No, but I, I, I agree with you. I, I think it would be beneficial, I, I don't want to see us spend a ton of money advertising, but something as simple as putting it on our Facebook page, or putting it on the website, just ahead of time, a few months, just so people have a heads up that, you know, we're soliciting interest for positions, I think it's worthwhile.
You know, we.
Then you've got an offer.
Yeah, I mean, and then, and then still see if the people that have sat there are still interested, but at the same time, it doesn't hurt to have more people interested, I guess.
Cause we've, if we've advertised in the past, and we've gotten.
Not for.
Yeah, and that's, and that's my concern. I don't want to spend thousands and thousands of dollars advertising when we have two people, or whatever the amount is that are already interested, but I still think it, I still think it's beneficial to probably get the word out there, just so if anybody doesn't even know that we have a planning board, maybe they would be interested.
Moving forward, we'll just, we'll do that the same time we send out the letter, then we'll just put something on the Facebook page. Moving forward, we'll just, we'll do that the same time we send out the letter, then we'll just put something on the Facebook page.
Yeah, I think that'd be kind of, it'd be a good idea.
Okay, we've got openings since I'm in the commission, you know, but we couldn't do it anyway.
Yeah, I know.
Let's not go back to that.
No, most of the time, if we can find somebody that's interested, it's already, we'll keep you around.
Two individuals, maybe, you know, to have jam for a phone call and.
Oh, yeah.
And. See where, see where that goes. They say, oh, then I guess we don't want to do it.
Yeah, how, how long ago did you send the letters? Just out of curiosity, you know? It was November first, wasn't it, on the water board, so?
Yeah, it would have been, it would have been almost same.
Okay.
Well, cause they all expired at the same time.
Well, I'm good at sending letters on my desk for getting one. It's quite possible.
We'll do a follow-up and all.
I'm good.
Okay, anything else on this topic? And then we'll move on to approving letters of transfer.
One at a time?
Um, you can, you have to take out your.
You know, I'd make a motion to approve the letters of transfer.
Okay, we have a motion and a second.
Oh, sorry.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve letters of transfer, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, motion carried. Approve for alpha permit. Oh.
Yeah.
Motion and a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose same sign. Motion carried. Homestead credits.
Will be approved, tiger.
Motion and a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion is carried. Approve beer licenses.
Will be approved.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve beer licenses.
Are they good there, Candy?
Nothing changed with the last year, right?
Um, we're minus.
Minus one, the one that we expected to be minus one?
Yep.
I, I enjoy the fact that we only charge fifty dollars, but we only charge campgrounders one dollar, so they get a forty-nine dollar break.
Because they're a.
I know, because they're, they're nonprofit.
You gotta buy coffee in some.
I just like that, it's, it's not like we're spending a hundred grand here and giving them a break.
Okay, all those in favor of approving the beer licenses, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, motion is carried. State's Attorney National Opioid Forms.
Oh. All right, I did as told and registered us for the opioid updates. We got a request to participate in settlement agreements with Johnson and Johnson, a lot of their subsidiaries. And then there's a second one for distributors that we got a request from. What I'm asking for tonight is that I can be an authorized signatory on behalf of the county to sign these forms, should be included in your packets. As far as I understand it, the deadline for us to sign on is January second, twenty twenty-two. That's not necessarily the date to reach a settlement, that's the date for us to make the vote. So I believe we can back out if we decide it's not for us, but that's what I'm asking for tonight.
What's your suggestion?
Stay in. I think we should see what they have to say.
I'll make a motion.
Although we're authorizing State's Attorney Cummins to be the signatory for the county. Correct?
Yep, and it, just for these two.
And by signing, we're just saying that we want, we, we want to be a party to the class action lawsuit settlement, if there's a settlement, we have the option at the point when seeing the settlement to back out.
I believe that's however it is.
Did you sack the chat?
All right, I made the motion.
Oh, you made the motion.
I still need a second.
Okay.
I was curious.
We'll wait for a second for Candy so she doesn't get all the way behind.
I agree.
But while, while we're sitting here now, to get back in proper order, a motion and a second, um does, does this mean that theoretically you would have the power then to sign the county on to whatever settlement was presented? As the signatory, you could have that power, is that right?
Nope, I want a limited power to sign these two pieces of paper, that's all I want to do. I want to make the vote by January second. Any final call is your guys' decision, I, I can't do that unless expressly given power to do that, and I don't think that's proper, I think the county commissioner should decide that. And, and as these things come up, I'll make sure to keep bringing them here, they'll get tired of me eventually.
Never.
Never, never.
I'm just gonna write this down, so Jeff made the motion. Adam said.
You're gonna screw up Candy's system over here.
That's all right, she can blame me. Okay, so we have a motion and a second to approve allowing the State's Attorney to sign the national opioid forms. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion is carried.
I was trying to listen.
Okay, well then we will move on, if there's any else, well, that's all I've got, anything to do with that for us? We'll move on to discussion on the community meeting that was held about the Highway Two expansion project and uh, things that they're planning and Jeff, if you'd like to lead us on that.
Yeah, it was, um, held at, or at High Plains, High Plains. High Plains Equipment here about a week or so ago and, um you got an update from we had an update from the Department of Transportation along with the contractor that they have invested in that and talked about the project going along Highway Two west or east of town up to the Hefty Rest area and, uh one of the big concerns is, is how they're planning on reducing the number of impact crashes by implementing J-turns. Um, J-turn is, it's a, you come out, you can't go straight across the, the highway, they want to uh, reduce or eliminate those T-bone high speed uh, impacts of a T-bone crash, so they want you to take a left turn if you're heading south and, and then cross the, the highway and then do a, a loop around and coming back to the east and then head south again. So uh, a lot of issues with that scenario. Um, one would be probably the first in the, the state on a major highway such as ours, um two, a lot of people could, um, indicated there would be problems with, uh, snow access. Uh, you know, if there's a heavy snowfall, priority number one for the department is?
Rolling or.
Opening the road. Um, secondary would, after the fact, would be cleaning out those turn lanes. And if you have to go down and then turn with a large trailer, large, uh, equipment, that may be a problem if there's a lot of snow on those, in those medians and those turn lanes. Um, so I, I think that as a commission, um, a stronger message would be sent as a commission instead of each one of us individually. And I'm no writer or poet, but, um, I thought what Brian Swenseth sent us all and his concerns as a property owner, as a business owner, as a homeowner along that stretch of highway made a lot of sense. Um, he pointed out a lot of the, a lot of the flaws that we talked about, but he also talked about the the ever-growing, uh, implement. Uh, you know, farm equipment isn't getting any smaller. And some of the implements that he pointed out in his, in his submission to the DOT and, and civil engineering was um, some really big equipment, taking up multiple lanes of highway, if you're turning on these J-turns probably not the best for, uh, something that could be, you know.
Well, you're gonna, you're gonna end up with a tractor-trailer jack nut because somebody was trying to make the turn back on the highway going the other direction and couldn't clear it.
So, you know, that and the J-turns would create a uh, uh, you know, for somebody that just wants to go across the highway, um creates a, a time difference, um, going down and then back and when, when all you want to do is cross the highway. I, I think one of the, the big things to help alleviate some of the, the devastating impacts that occur along that would be maybe reducing the speed. I've mentioned acceleration lanes, as you turn, make a wider lane, so a, a vehicle would either have time to emerge if you're coming up upon it from rear end or give that vehicle that's turning out onto the highway an opportunity to accelerate as it's moving down the road. Um a lot of discussion comes around, um, running roads. Um I'm not sure if and obviously I think if, if done right that eastern side of Devil's Lake could be a, a, a really, uh, a boon for that area of our community. Um, if you provide safety and access points and, um, easy in and out.
I guess from my perspective, I mostly agree with you, I think that there's probably not a good workable solution without inclusion in front of roads.
No.
You're in the fact that they're totally punting on that and gonna turn almost every single one of these intersections into a J-turn, it does not sound appropriate to me. I think it won't do that, I think it would be okay to have a couple of J-turns in places that it's primarily residential traffic coming off. But in a lot of these intersections where it's, it's farm implements and things coming off, it's never gonna work. You know, like, so the ones that are directly like across from Acrumon Acres, for, for example, that might not be the end of the world, have one or two J-turns on that corridor. But I just don't see, I don't see how this is a lookable or good solution, I think. Uh, for one, it could end up being very obnoxious, everyone that has to work with it day and day out. But two, I don't think it solves the problem that you want it to solve. You know, and we need to find some kind of a solution and, I mean, ultimately it's going to include fronted roads. And I know we don't have the money sitting around to do that, and I was very disappointed that the state and doesn't seem to have any plan to help us with that.
The fronted roads, they're not doing anything, they're from the loose settings east on both sides of the highway there, they're not.
They're not doing anything.
I, I was there and I laughed.
I think that.
Went to my granddaughter's.
Personally. I, I think the thought process was on the north side of the road, they would like to put one in there, but it didn't sound to me as though they had any kind of plan other than to say, hey, you should put one in.
You, yes, us, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. There was, there wasn't any, hey, here's a, a partial project.
That was actually said, yeah.
Well, I don't know.
More or less, I mean, we, we were both synched to each other and then that's.
I think it was implied, I don't know if it was outright said, but essentially, I remember something to the effect of it saying that local or fronted roads tend to be a local responsibility or something to that nature.
Right, and then today said, we, we look forward to working with local partners on.
With our local partners, so you know, that means.
Yeah, so I said that.
Means the townships, the townships don't have any money, which means they gotta come to us.
Right, and I mean.
Which I don't mind putting a partial cost if there's a, you know, a fronted road next to, you know, that, that might make some sense.
But this would be, this would be a major expansion of the area, I mean, that would be.
Yeah, but I mean. I mean, we're talking millions and millions of dollars probably.
Right.
Well, both sides of the highway need it.
Depending on where you are, yeah.
I mean, in that area, east.
You know, looking going apart at the casino, how did they do those fronted roads years ago? How did they get that put in?
Well, how did they end up paved? It's a better question in my mind.
There's, well, by my house, they're staying home on the city limits, which is before you get to that, there's a city hall.
So was that state policy back then?
Oh, yeah, whatever that was, yeah.
So that's why they made, they still clean them and stuff, right?
Right, in fact, the city hall ones, that one time they stayed home also. Just like going west of town, a little bit of fronted roads they have there, they're, they're staying home.
Yeah.
State changed their policy at some point in time when they started to determine they didn't like cleaning them and they didn't like paying for them.
Yeah. Gosh, state crazy.
They're just pushing off costs and responsibilities.
Who knows, it's crazy how you give a portion of the town half and the other portion doesn't.
Well, I did get that they're not gonna do this until twenty-four, the construction season.
Yes.
So there is time to, you know, make deals with them or.
But when you look at your plans.
Show an interest, how we want this done, but.
Was it, was it eight, eight J-turn intersections that they counted?
It was tough to read the maps out of the wall, it, it looked to be eight or nine, it might.
I think it was eight. And, and, in that, from, from, from the rest area to, uh, Elstra, at eight J-turns they're gonna put.
I told. Both sides of that.
Well, my, my suggestion would be, if you're gonna, what's it gonna cost to put the J-turn in? Would they be willing to take the cost of the J-turn and input that, that money to frontage?
Well, somebody willing to.
But half, it would have to be half.
Ultimately, what you're gonna need to do is you're gonna need to reduce the total number of entry points onto the highway. Right, that's, that's the solution that you need to come to, not, not, oh, we're gonna have the same amount of entry points, it's just there are gonna be J-turns, so that's where they're going with it, it's.
Well, I think the interesting part of it too is in some of the documentation, like that Brian had in his letter, J-turns work to stop uh, you know, crashes that have high, high speed and, and, and things of that nature, but they actually increase smaller, smaller crashes, so rear ends, things like that actually increase over expansion, so yeah, you might and, and I think the, the point of making the highway safer obviously is the point. But if you have an intersection now that hasn't, that hasn't had any accidents that have had anyone either, why would you put in something that could possibly increase the number of crashes? Potentially, it doesn't make a lot of sense.
Would, would it be possible to, and this is as much a question for you, Kevin, as, as anybody else, but would it be possible to figure out who is quarterbacking this on the state's end? And see if we can't get together with them sometime in the next year or so and sit down and talk about what a more comprehensive solution would look like and where the responsibility would come from, how much would be the county and all of that? Because the only, what I don't want to see happen is I don't want the state to then get to say, well, we fixed your problem by doing something like this, because as soon as they put that money in there, they'll never help us with it again, I'm sure. And if they make it worse, then they made it worse.
When, when do we, when do we have to, until to write essentially our comments again? I can't remember what the, was it sometime they had the January or something like that?
It was no longer.
You know, we didn't have a great deal of time and I don't know, they must have a finalized plan date in mind and then they're, you know, go from there to the engineering cost estimation and then the construction phase of it, but.
I'm just wondering, cause if, 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 I can't remember the date off the top of my head, but for some reason, like the twentieth of January or something's in there. I was just wondering, maybe it would make sense if we would invite, um, you know, who's our state engineer in the area, Wyatt, correct? Or maybe invite him into our first meeting in January and visit with him and see what his thought process is on how we could, you know, what our concerns are, and if we don't get anything out of him, then, you know, we, we have time then still to put a letter together to get it off. Uh, you know, when, voicing our concerns and saying what we'd like.
But I think, you know, might be beneficial to play with honey first, you know, with the state and say, hey, we would love to be a partner in this and potentially if we can find some cash and partner with you on putting in front of those, we'll do that, depending on what that number ends up being before you, you immediately try to shoot down on the fact that they're trying to help you.
Well, you think about it, from Smalls as well, in, in the Cam Siggies shop, there's six accesses to the Westbound Lane. I mean, my God.
There's just too many.
There are a lot of corners.
That's ludicrous. Yeah, there's just too many accesses.
I mean, it's just too many accesses there. On the other side of the highway, you have.
Three hundred and three or something, I don't know.
Well, that's fine, and that's why I'm thinking if we could at least visit with Wyatt, maybe we could at least talk to him and say, you know, ask the question of if they took some of that J-turn money, would you be willing to help us with doing fronted roads and then maybe we could do something a little bit different? Because he could run up and play ball at DOT at least for us.
Wyatt's a reasonable person, but I think we don't want to bring him in and put him on the front of the camera until we have a.
Well, maybe, maybe Kevin, maybe Kevin could voice our concerns to him and, and, and visit with him.
Yeah, I think. I mean, Kevin, as much as anybody could, knows what the needs are, right, so I think that would be, I guess that's kind of where I came back to the original point is is, is this something where we can try to head this off before this gets so far out ahead of us that we can't catch it?
I would say July one, we better have it headed off or find out what's. I would say July one, we better have it headed off or find out what's gonna happen. Cause after that, it's gonna move forward the way they want. Don't wait a year, don't wait a year.
Well, I think the concerning point of it is, is that, I mean, I mean, obviously, there's some input both ways, but what I heard out at High Plains, it was, you know, they had had a previous meeting and it was, this was voiced previously. And they still went ahead with designing it this way. So, even if we say, you know, I I I agree, we need to get involved, but at the same point, are they even gonna listen? I hope they do, but.
I don't know that must be true.
Yeah, we have to try.
We should see where the city stands on it too. You know, I know they don't have property out there, but I mean, they're always access for the city.
No, but if something they may. No, but they need to be, they need to be involved too, cause at some point in time down the highway run, if there continues to be uh, development, there's gonna be annexation down the run and those front of roads are gonna become city front of roads. So, they need to be able, at least be talking the whole what's going to occur as long as.
That full development could end up moving on.
Yeah, well, sure, you know. I mean, and at this point, that development is close enough to High Plains equipment that you could just connect the whole front of road system, right, and have them have a front of road.
Yeah, well, you only understand, I don't understand.
I mean, that's. But then, but again, you just, so we just need to get the the uh, we need to get a feeler out directly to the state. I think it's probably not good enough to sit and wait for this intermediary engineering firm to make our decisions for us.
Yeah. I think go through Wyatt.
Wyatt's very, because it's just the latest greatest thing that's out there in road engineering, you know, first it was the roundabouts that uh, all of a sudden popped up.
You're kind of, I'm kind of a fan of roundabouts.
You 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 know.
Worked pretty well. They work pretty well every day, that's what I'm talking about. You look through their ones a year.
Yeah, yeah. You know, so, and that's kind of their their thought process was that everybody hated the idea of roundabouts until we put a few of them in and they got accustomed to them and then they realized that they're okay and they'll they'll have the same effect with these J turns. And I'm like, I don't think so. I I I think as our agriculture equipment continues to evolve, um, I don't know if it's gonna get any smaller anytime soon. And so, you're gonna have to have these wider turn lanes and different things like that to accommodate some of this equipment.
But it's gonna take, so you're coming coming off of a J turn, right? So, you you pull on and you come across and you cut across and now you you're here and you've got a big rig, right?
Yeah.
It's gonna take you so much longer to get this thing turned around and you're cutting across both lanes of traffic and then you gotta accelerate again. That's probably gonna take you four times longer to get up to speed from that situation than it would coming across both lanes and going.
Right.
Right? I mean, I can't imagine how it's not.
Morning.
I guess, when you said there were nine on the map?
Eight, I think, if I counted right, I think it was.
And that's both sides of the road then? Well, it's, they're always in the middle. Yes, so, yeah.
Basically, the J turn, it's gonna have a curve through it, so it's gonna collect some.
Yeah, there're gonna be eight, eight sets of J turns going east, west, all the way to the rest area, all the way to the rest area. Which is unbelievable, and that's it, and that's the solution, right? That's what they're gonna give us. So, anyway, Kevin, in order to make sure we're not sitting here all night, would you reach out and we can be in touch about all of that and see? And if it comes to it, we need to submit a letter and comment and all that, then I think we approach the city and see if we can, why not pull them into? So, I'm sure that their concerns are gonna be the same as our concerns. Sound reasonable?
And we should work on maybe drafting some sort of correspondence with. And so, we can have that ready at one of our meetings in January to approve as a commission, sign it all. And, and you know, hopefully, that will have a little more impact with D O T and the engineering firm.
Did they set a date that they take input?
I think it wasn't till the twenty, I know, I do think it was like they wanted it submitted by the twentieth of January. That sounds right.
I don't, I can't remember the exact date. It was sometime in January.
Again, they said they wanted public comment for like another month. That was it.
It was basically a month or six weeks. I I I I hate to say the exact date, but I remember it being sometime later in January. No, it wasn't that long.
Christmas program was really good too. Okay, any further discussion or do we feel pretty good about the short term marching orders we did in Kevin?
Good. I think we're okay. We got a little bit of time too, so.
We're busy.
Okay, and if it's all right with everyone, I'd like to move on to a discussion on independent contract.
He had looked at this prior.
Yeah, so this was brought to my attention, uh, that there was a contractor agreement with the recorder's office. I'll go to Beth for Beth here. She asked me to look at the contract. I think the contract's fine. I don't think it has to be bid out by the county because it's coming out of Bev's budget. However, it does need to be approved by the county commission before it can be effective with the law. So, if Bev wants to bring that up for approval by the county commission, I I think that would solve the issue.
I just have one question, Beth. Katie, has she very interested in doing this?
Yes, now that she's settled in Texas.
That's my, next question was, she's all right doing this from there?
Yes, I actually got a computer.
No problem.
Nope, we, I tested, I checked, it didn't, and it's fine. It's calculated out, I I figured around thirty seven thousand documents in one year's time. That would take us back to nineteen fifty nine. So, that's maybe a big jump, helps save us a lot of time if we're doing that. If they're training, it's not gonna take her quite as long as even me to do it.
So, she's actually going to be doing the indexing of the documents for us?
She'll start at nineteen, I believe it starts in July sixth of nineteen seventy nine and just north backwards.
Yeah. Who did we, who was previously indexing our documents?
You were doing it in our office, but we haven't had time to do it. We're still validating it.
Okay, so this is, okay, this is, so it's something where you've been doing it when you have some time here and there, the time here and there isn't.
So, this is what Katie had brought up before.
Yeah.
How much you have in your budget to do this?
Uh, the budget rate, now we have one twenty four thousand dollars.
Set up for this?
For for this, actually, calculated out, it's probably gonna be around thirteen thousand for a year.
For a year.
Yep.
Is this?
Between a thousand and eleven hundred dollars a month.
This is coming out of the Endrin account, correct?
Endrin, and that's what Endrin set up for is preservation of documents. So, this will help get those documents preserved and backed up in a few of the latest.
So, this is gonna get, get us online, easy searchability all the way back to the fifties, you said?
Yes, nineteen fifty nine began with.
That seems.
Was well, first year. It's a volume in the second year, depending on what budget it would have in the end. Right now, for Endrin, on average, we're getting around to fifty five and fifty seven hundred dollars a year from Endrin.
And so, oh, sorry, this twelve thousand nine fifty that you have on here, you have around thirty five sets of documents. She doesn't get thirty seven thousand documents done, it's only.
Maybe less, yeah, yeah, or she can get thirty seven thousand.
Shooting, yeah.
So, yeah, and and the the Endrin dollars we spent to the past were simply for the scanning portion of it and then the dump of the documents, but then we never have indexed them because we just have it at time. So, basically, we've got everything scanned up to this point. We just gotta get it indexed and we don't have time to do a little.
Yeah, that's last project.
She feels she can get this done in a year?
She feels she, well, the thirty seven thousand documents, she feels she can get that. After that, she's gonna see how it's doing. So, that's around a thousand documents a day or a month.
That's a lot of documents.
They want us to do it, right?
She does.
The state wants us to do it.
Yes, it's nice to get it in because right now, we're still relying on the books.
So, who's gonna, so you're gonna confirm once this is done to correct or how?
Yes, we'll validate after that.
Yeah, he'll he'll spot check it, no, no different than you do on when the scans come in.
We'll actually check each document. We'll validate every single hour. There'll be indexed, but then our office will validate and make sure that the information's. The nice part of what we're doing it is she knows how we're set up. You know, it's the subdivisions. We don't have to train anyone special to learn how to do this.
We need a motion to do this?
Yep, and it's gonna be approved by a majority.
Oh, sorry.
We have a motion to second to sign an independent contract for help from Katie to do for indexing of uh, recorder's files going back many decades. So, any further discussion?
How how long has this been between you and Katie been in the works?
We had talked. I mentioned it to her in September, I believe it was, that she was not settled. She didn't know if she wanted to do it. She was still planning on travel. So, then that's when I kinda came up with that.
Were there other individuals or companies out there that you were looking at?
In June, I looked at U S imaging, who does it? They were more extensive. They turn per page for indexing. Some of our documents are over a hundred pages. So, per page, that a little bit more expensive. Plus then, the other counties that I spoke with, the learning curve for them to learn how to do it, index of it that we index could be quite a lot.
I have one more comment. I don't know if it moves the needle or anything, but we specifically, Bev and I, had talked about this independent contractor agreement doesn't entitle this person to benefits, no matter how many hours they're working. Right, because they're not an employee of the county. They're just somebody hired to work for the county. So, you don't have to worry about that liability as well.
Yeah, it's no different than we hired, when we hired somebody to do a contract to scan the documents for us, come in and scan them and then dump them. I mean, or when we work with Tyler Technologies to put everything for all the things we do, I mean, it's just an independent contractor.
Kevin hires someone and it all.
And reading the, reading the contract, if state's in here not performing a duty to give them thirty they can terminate.
Yeah, we've got all kinds of options if it doesn't work right.
See that, Jeff?
You have any concerns over the uh, the substitution vote, where to substitute?
I don't. That was something that we had talked about initially. We're not gonna substitute on our end and if Katie tries to substitute on her end, she has to inform Bev and then that gives us again, the opportunity to pull the rip or if we want.
And I guess it doesn't change the the fee. The fee, the fee remains the same regardless of.
Well, that's, that's the thing. I mean, I I don't know why you'd attempt to subcontract it, I mean, at at that total value for those amount of documents. I mean, she can't be, the reason she can make money on this is she knows our system and she's been with us before and she can think she can move along fairly quickly on it. I mean, if it was U S imaging or something that didn't know our documents, didn't know our subdivisions and things, that the cost would be far more expensive, I would guess.
You don't see any hiccups at all, Bev?
I don't.
You don't see any hiccups at all here?
I don't, see it right now, no.
The the equipment provided was?
CPU, that's all that was provided. And once that comes, that'll come back to us. That'll actually become one of the public endred stations. Let's not be wasted.
Sure. It may be worn out by the time it gets finished.
Well, some of the, we've seen hold it at the one CPU that we're using for police station, I was like five six years old.
Hey, any further discussions or comments?
Not that I care what I think, but I was a recorder and that's a really reasonable rate. Really reasonable, yeah.
Especially when they're multiple pages.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to sign the agreement. Uh, here to go further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying, I would like a roll call on that.
I think it's a good idea.
Roll call, please.
Wolf.
Hi.
Lifon.
Hi.
Brown.
Hi.
Brett.
Hi.
Wakey.
Hi.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck. Okay, that's the end of new business, unless I'm missing something. Uh, so we'll move on to visitors and delegations. Sean, you wanna talk again?
No.
Sure? Tell us about the weather for five minutes. Like, you're in a hurry. Okay, and then we will move on to announcements. So, does anyone have any announcements we could be ordering?
I do.
Go ahead.
Pre-trial services from the state of North Dakota is considering placing a pre-trial service program in Devil's Lake to serve the lake region. They are gonna be coming to the courthouse the first week of the new year. You don't have to be there, but if you'd like to be there, you're certainly welcome. Follow up with me for details. I think it would be a huge benefit to our community and it would help alleviate a lot of the strain on law enforcement around here.
Well, let's pretend I don't know anything about anything. Tell me specifically what that means, the pay was created for around here for that.
So, what it basically is, is somebody gets a probation officer before they are convicted, before their case goes through. So, it's somebody to help monitor them, make sure they're getting the drug testing, living where they say they're living, getting a job, staying productive, not hanging out with the wrong type of people. And the the big benefit is that we get bed space back in our jail because people can be released on supervision. And that creates a big flux of people who don't need to be, uh, let me rephrase. People who we don't think should go out on their own without supervision, end up sitting in the jail. If we can have somebody that can watch them and monitor them, that helps us to free up the bed space. I think it's a great idea. I'm gonna advocate very strongly for it. I think the law enforcement center personnel is also going to advocate for that.
I think it makes perfect sense. If we did get it, with a sense for how many parole officers you're talking about, how big of an apparatus that is?
I think it's just one position.
Just one. Uh, it's gonna be a busy person.
It will be a busy person. Um, I don't know the other communities that are being considered, but I think we have a really strong pitch here. We have all of the surrounding counties, we have the city, we're positioned between two reservations. And so, I think that that makes it a very attractive location. Um, because we do a lot of joint work between the uh.
Who foots the role for that?
Paid for by the legislature.
Are they a parole person, like?
They got, I wanna say, three quarters of a million to fund another office, you know? So, they're gonna handle it. It's just where they put it.
It's just a matter of, well, can we get them here?
I, my pitch is, as far as northeast North Dakota goes, I mean, this is it between Grand Forks and Minot.
Yeah.
So, this is a totally logical place to put it. I think that'd be really helpful for us.
Only the leisure, they're setting up for all the state.
There's one out of Bismarck, there's one in Minot and one in Fargo. And I think they have funding to open one more office. So, this would be really good for us.
I don't think we have to do that. Try to secure that funding? It's approved.
It would be good just to show up and show that we have a big interest in it.
Yeah, I think it'd be great for all of us to be there in this commission.
I love. Bed sheets, that would help.
Well, well, it'd be great if you would email us when, when they're, when you're gonna be meeting and stuff like that, so we could feed it.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, maybe I'd I'd like to be a part of it at least so we could show that we're interested.
Yeah, we all.
More interested, we can show the better opportunity.
Absolutely.
We'll probably all like to be there, absolutely.
That's, that's great to know. Thank you for letting us know about that. That could be huge for the community.
Meeting by that.
Oh, are they talking?
Because, well, that's round that. So, I don't know how many meetings are.
So, it might be the law enforcement center.
Rob knows all about this, right?
Yep.
Yeah, yeah.
Sheriff's and.
He emailed me for rooms and we don't have any of those trades, so.
Is there a help out there?
And then probation's on board too, so I think you're gonna see a big law enforcement presence come out for this.
Let's roll out the red carpet now. This could be great for us.
Do you see, bring it up the, are it?
I think they're trying to divert as many people out of the system as they can.
Are they excited?
Yeah, and there's, there's a lot of data on this. If you can get people out of jail, get them successful earlier, less likely they are to commit a crime in the future.
Right, yes.
So, that would also. So that would also leave you a big strain on us.
And the decrease of, yeah, decrease of recidivism is a positive thing for us.
Huge.
Something's gotta be done.
Next thing to follow would be treatment providers in the area, that would be huge, if you can do that. Kind of the tail follows the dog, you know? If we can, if we can get that, then providers might be more interested in coming here.
Sounds very promising. Yeah, that's great, thank you, but anything else?
That's what I thought it was.
At four o'clock.
Yeah.
January fourth at four.
January fourth at four.
Where at?
Law library, third floor.
Like Kenny said, that, that might change, cause it's wrong, but we'll keep you posted.
Thank you. Any other announcements? There are none, uh, we'll really quickly do portfolios in case anybody has anything from that, uh, start with Adam.
Off the top of my head right now, oh. Not a whole lot, I need to visit with Bow. Uh, but other than that, I don't have a whole other stuff, a whole other, anything to add, I guess, at this point, no.
Okay, no problem. Walk.
Uh, I guess we touched on Bev's thing, Lisa got the money, the money transferred. We're not meeting as far as, uh, access until the end of January. Met with, uh, Camille at Peterson Arena, they're moving on, putting some sketches together with reasons for the building project and then, other than that, other than.
Okay, Mr. Brown?
Well. Everything's fine with the, uh, DAX department and the, uh, Jewish department. He was a little short-staffed and overwhelmed with some transfers that, um, he had to come up with a couple days, uh, to Lockford City. Uh, we were over our bed capacity at the law enforcement center, so Lockford City was the closest facility that we bought and we needed nine, nine there, so, and that's a long, long trip, so. Um, but he got it all worked out and, and everything was good and I think, uh, things are gonna move, uh, move forward, um, bringing some people back, so getting some people out and, yeah.
Rob got a request in to move up to sixty-five, so.
Yeah.
And wait ninety days, three months, and then we're gonna go to eighty, eighty. We get to sixty-five down there.
We're moving in the right direction.
And then just parole you, I'm just. Great idea, it's gonna work. Right, you're gonna be a parole officer.
Airport, we, uh, met last week and, uh, moving ahead with expansion plans for the terminal. Um, going from about a fifty-five hundred square foot, six thousand square foot terminal to almost twelve thousand, uh, terminal. And then we're moving the fire protection area to a bigger facility, um, doubling that capacity, moving a lot of the managerial, um, office support staff over into where that, what they call the ARF building next door to the, to the terminal over in there. Well, one of the things that the terminal will have will be, um, better baggage handling, some, uh, better handling for people departing planes after they go through the security checkpoints. They'll have laboratories and vending machines and drinking potions where that was something that was limited before, so if you.
Oh, a cocktail bar, no time.
Got through security and all of a sudden your, uh, your plane was delayed and your departure was delayed, uh, you went thirsty, uh.
You could even buy some chips in the drink.
Yeah, so.
That's great.
And so, and, and all that's going through, uh, through the ARF funds that the airport, uh, received. And so, um, things will, things will be hopping out there. Remember Matt yesterday and, uh, we had a very lengthy meeting, uh, but it was a, a lot of good discussion on a lot of things that are happening within our community, so.
Very good, Mr. Brown?
Oh, back up in jail, even though they didn't meet this month, so. Hurt to me, done, done.
Very good, the only thing I'll make mention of is we had the county's ARF committee met, uh, and we sort of set up some of the parameters and vision of, uh, of where we think we're gonna go as, as a committee. Um, and then because we're in the middle of the holiday season, we adjourned until the first week of February, is that right, second week of February?
First.
First, second, first, one of those two, right, right around the first, second week of February. Hopefully, we've got more guidance from the federal government at that point, uh, and if not, we'll come ahead anyway. All I have, is there anything else for the good of the order? Adjourned, thank you all very much.